On the seven A on the, uh, on the city council agenda.
Uh, all right, we'll move to the, uh, city council agenda, seven A, um. Mr. Biddle.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Uh, before you have some proposed, uh, regulations, uh, to, uh, implement, uh, measure C that were originally presented to the city council at our last meeting, um, and at the request of, uh, of Mr. McIntosh with the Woodfin Sweet Hotel, uh, more time was requested to, uh, to review and provide some comment. Um, I did not receive any, um, comment in advance of getting the agenda item out. I did, uh, receive a letter, uh, the day that the packet, uh, had been mailed, uh, on the first of February, and I believe the council received a, a similar letter from Mr. McIntosh where, um, Woodfin has expressed, uh, some, uh, concerns, uh, that they have. Uh, likewise, at the, um, prior meeting, I know, um, individuals from E-Base had also, uh, provided a, a letter, uh, lodging some of their, uh, concerns as are related to, um, these proposed regulations. And, um, it's really at the pleasure of the council how you want to proceed, whether we want to, uh, um, you know, hear from the, do you want to go through the, uh, the, the content of the letter that initially from, from Woodfin and E-Base, or, or how do you want to handle this?
Mayor Davis, can I make a suggestion?
Mr. Frickie.
Um, I, I'm, I would suggest that we hear from the public and then, um, march through the, the document that was, that was prepared by the city attorney, um, in, in order of, of the pages, and if any of us has a proposed change, that we, we make that proposal. Now, now, the only thing that, that, that Mayor Davis, you may want to do is, I, I don't know if this is appropriate, but you can ask that, um, the members of the public can weigh in on page by page, but I kind of think that we can just get from the public the basic, the basic things that they're seeking and then go through this.
I'd like to make a suggestion. I'd like to make a suggestion that, uh, we put together a committee with E-Base and the hotels, and that we come back at the next meeting with the result of the committee's input. Uh, I don't know that everybody's had ample opportunity to address the rules. I think we're going to get different opinions from different people, and I think putting a committee together for a, a two-week period to, uh, come up with the, a result would be in everybody's best interest, and we, we know that everybody's been represented who has the concerns.
Uh, is there any support for this proposal?
Mayor Davis, I don't, I don't favor that. We, we put this over specifically to give Woodfin a chance to, uh, communicate with us, and they've done that, and we already had the communications from E-Base, so I, I, I think we should just take it on. I mean, I, I don't know what another two weeks or a committee is going to do. That, we're, we're, the whole council would still have issues and questions to get resolved, so I, I think we should hear from the public and go from there.
Uh, John, I think your proposal's right. Could I ask the gentleman in the back who's recording this, uh, who, who are you representing?
Yeah, I'm with Cal-X at UC Berkeley.
That's fine.
Cal-X, it's the radio station at the campus.
Oh, great.
It, it just, is there a way to facilitate you getting what you're trying to get without having to stand there and hold a microphone up in the air? I, I don't know.
At the best, I tried asking, I guess it's Christina inside?
Yeah.
And she said, no, I mean, the only alternative is if I move around, which I might have to do as people talk.
Okay.
It's the best because there's some speakers.
Could I have an indication from the members of the public? How many people wish to address this item? Could you just raise your hand?
Good.
Okay, uh, let's have the public come forward. Do we have our sign-up sheet?
It looks like it's right there, yes. I see it, Mayor Davis.
When, uh, you come up, uh, sign the sign-up sheet and come forward and speak.
Yes, could you? That'd be great. So, it'll be on the corner in front of the, uh, acting
We don't have speaker cards like other councils do, so just come, so just come on up.
There's no requirement that you actually have to sign in. It just helps us with our record keeping.
We're just asking you two, so we can make our minute.
So if you don't want to sign, you're free not to.
Okay, whoever wants to speak, let's go.
Don't be shy.
Uh, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for letting me express my opinions about my work at the Woodfin Suites. I am a maintenance worker at the hotel. Uh, my wife and I both work at the Woodfin. We enjoy our jobs at the hotel, and we enjoy the people that we see at work every day. We have made several friends here. Our supervisors appreciate the work that we do, and they tell us so and treat us with respect. While we enjoy our jobs greatly and hope to be at the Woodfin for a long time to come, I am upset that my wife, who works in housekeeping, has had her hours cut ever since the city decided that the housekeepers who complained to have to be given more hours than employees like my wife. My wife has always come to work on time. She does a great job every day, and she tries to work all the hours available to her. We depend on both of our paychecks to support our family. It is simple, it is simply isn't fair that she is being penalized because others are choosing to complain. I think it would be better if the city gave more thought to the impact of our, of your actions and having on good people like myself and my wife. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask for a clarification? Sir, you're indicating that since we said that they shouldn't cut the hours of the employees who have been part of the protest, that, that your wife's hours have been cut?
Yes, she, yes, her hours have been cut. It's basically like you're, uh, you're having the hotel decide whether to go with, uh, seniority. Well, basically, I feel a hotel shouldn't have to decide that certain people should work and other people shouldn't.
Okay. Thank you.
There are three hands.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tatiana Omeley, and I have been working with Woodfin Suites for only three months at the food and beverage department, and I must say I enjoyed every single moment of it. I came there right before Christmas, and we went through the extensive training to get ready for the restaurant opening, and, um, our management provided the best of the best to train us properly. It was not only useful, but it was also fun. We had an opportunity to travel. We went to different wineries. Our management consulted us. What would we think would be appropriate for the new restaurant to accommodate different kinds of people with their different needs and different tastes? So, every single opinion was, uh, on count, and I cannot say enough how well they treated us. So, it's really upsetting that now we have those people protesting the Woodfin Suites on the outside of the hotel, because I think it affects the success of our business. We all put so many hours and effort in order to open our new restaurant, and people really want to work. They want to enjoy it. They want to make other people happy. We, um, so, uh, really, we trust the quality of our food. We trust the quality of our service, and it affects our business deeply. It affects the people working there. We don't want to look for other jobs. We want to stay with the company, who did nothing but good for us. So, if we could address the issue, and we wouldn't like to have any changes there, except we want to work and we want to make other people happy, and we want to be happy ourselves.
Tatiana, could I ask you, what, what does the T-shirt represent? I see.
I am not alone. You see lots of people dressed in blue.
So, all the people dressed in blue, okay.
Yeah.
Same message. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else like to come forward?
Evening, Mayor Davis, Vice Mayor Atkins, city council members, and, uh, city officials. Thank you again for allowing us at Woodfin Suites to, um, comment on the proposed adopted regulations and procedures implementing measure C. Last week, we had the opportunity to, um, to write a series of specific suggestions intended to ensure that implementing the regulations would, um, would, would, um, at least slightly more, create a slightly more workable situation for us, uh, rather than the less onerous one that was set forth in the original resolution. Tonight, you've heard from, from a couple of my colleagues, we have, um, which reinforces the fact that we've created a wonderful working atmosphere at the Woodfin Suites. We have a great group of people working at Woodfin Suites. We treat them all well. Tatiana alluded to our Christmas party, where we gave Christmas gifts to every associate who attended the Christmas party. Each gift was individually chosen for our associates. We didn't just go out and buy the same gift for everyone, and all of those things create a very cohesive working atmosphere for us. We're afraid that the guidelines in the, uh, in the proposed resolution, as it's set up, if they're adopted, they would disrupt the team environment and the working arrangements that, that, that make the daily routines of our colleagues more productive, more pleasant, and less physically demanding. Ironically, these are the men and women that the interests of the regulation purport to advance. We at, uh, Woodfin, um, don't doubt for a moment the thought that all of you city council members have, um, have, um, put into the welfare of the, uh, of the Emory Service Sector workers, and we appreciate, appreciate the regulations that were crafted with our colleagues' best interests at heart. We do, however, still have some, um, severe objections to the, uh, to, um, to the arbitrary square footage that was chosen as a means of measuring the, uh, the level of work standard at the Woodfin. The, the basic, uh, work, um, the workload at the Woodfin is determined by the number of checkout rooms that a housekeeper would do on a daily basis. It really has very, very little to do with the 5,000 square feet, um, as alluded to in the, uh, in the measure C regulations. Um, the number of checkout rooms require that a housekeeper basically make that suite 100% brand-new before a new customer can check in, which means thoroughly cleaning the bathroom, thoroughly changing the bed, changing all the linens in the room, and as I said, making the room brand, putting the room in brand-new condition. A lot more work goes into that than work going into a room that would be classified as a stayover, where one of you would stay in the hotel for two or three nights, where it wouldn't be necessary to do that degree of work. We also work at the Woodfin Suites with a team environment, which the measure, uh, in, in our housekeeping department, which measure C also doesn't recognize. Um, our housekeepers are, are supported by housemen in the normal course of their daily routine, and they are also supported by room inspectorses. The housemen do the basic heavy, heavier work involved in a housekeeper's room assignments, and the floor inspectors help the, help the associates whenever they request additional help to get their rooms cleaned. If we, if we measure the work productivity strictly by 5,000 square feet, this largely impacts the, the amount of work that we would have to put onto a housekeeper, disregarding the heavy workload that the housemen and the floor inspectors do to provide su- support in that area. Um, secondly, um, we're also concerned about the complaint process. As proposed in the measure, the process completely bypasses, um, bypasses the opportunity that the hotel would have to address these, any concerns or any complaints that the associates may have with their department, departmental managers. I'm not aware of any other policy or practice in business where complaints are taken outside of the workplace. In this case, we, they would be brought directly to the city council, and the process at city council would be invoked to handle these complaints. It completely takes that responsibility away, away from us at the hotel and really undermines our authority. Um, I would ask all of you honorable council members, before you take the drastic step to, the step of adopting these flawed measures, um, that, in their current form, that I would urge you to, um, to, um, come to our hotel, take a look at what we do, observe how we do our work, observe how we do, how we identify and assign our work, and learn a little bit more about our operation and what, and the items that we need to consider in order to be a successful and a large business contributor in the city of Emeryville.
Can you bring your comments to a close?
Okay, I will. Um, I would ask that you table further consideration of these measures until such times the city investigates into the housekeeper's complaints, um, and that that investigation is being completed, because we're confident that these complaints are wholly unfounded, and we welcome the chance to clear our good name and bring closure to this matter. In addition, um, our employees are still employed.
You have run over your time.
Okay. Um, may I make one other comment about the noise bylaws in the city of Emeryville?
Perhaps if you have someone with you who could come up and speak. Next?
Chris. The noise ordinance in, uh, in the city of Emeryville, and I'll let Chris refer to it. You can just read that.
Okay. Hi, I'm Chris Shores, hi. Um, the ordinance here, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared, but it talks about the declare, uh, to be the policy of the city of Emeryville to prohibit excessive and annoying noise for all sources subject to, um, its police power. I, I'm going to kind of freely say this, if that's okay.
Mayor Davis, if I may, this is really unrelated to these, these regulations. I, I know they have an issue about, um, noise complaints.
Yeah, we're, we're focusing on just the, the measure C regulations.
Okay.
Uh, if you have an, another complaint, you can address it at a different time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else who'd like to come forward?
Good evening. I'm Tanya Smith, the general manager at the Four Points by Sheraton. So, thank you very much for another opportunity, um, to bring some points to your attention. I would hope that a few more things be considered before the proposed measure C implementation regulations are put into place. Um, they're very, very specific little points. Um, first is that I would hope that you would consider not excluding tips from wages. Um, I didn't see anywhere that the voters of Emeryville and measure C have asked for this specifically. I believe, and I'm not an expert in, uh, state and federal laws, but I believe the California state and federal government consider them to be wages. Our associates every week have to declare their tips, and they're taxed on them. So, I, I'm not quite sure why they're not being considered wages all of a sudden, because they actually do, um, excuse me, add up to be quite a substantial amount. Um, also, the other, another point that I was hoping to have a little more consideration on, um, the proposed, uh, implementation regulations asks that copies, uh, or, sorry, that, um, licensed plans be developed by an architect and signed, or stamped, or what have you, um, showing the square footage of the guest rooms. Uh, I believe, and we believe, um, my owners believe, that that would cost us several thousands of dollars just to produce something, um, for this measure. We have existing plans. They are stamped and official, and an architect has put them together. We could certainly, um, replicate them in whatever format it needs to be, eight and a half by eleven, laminated, what have you, but we just ask that, I don't think that the city council intends for us to spend all this additional money for it, and so I would just ask for consideration on that. And then our, my last, um, request is, in the proposed, um, implementation, uh, regulation, it asks for the daily work logs showing the 5,000 square feet, or less than 5,000 square feet and, uh, six checkout rooms, uh, be signed by the associate and a copy be made for them. Currently, um, for the last few months, ever since, I believe, um, we thought it wise, because we were making sure that we were following all the guidelines of measure C, we, we have our associates signing off on it on a daily basis. We are keeping them, because, um, we want to make sure, for compliance reasons, we have them, um, if anybody were to ask. The only thing that we're hoping not to do is incur the additional payroll of, you know, typically 15 half, room attendants will come down same time of the day, and for them to stand around for, you know, that only takes a few minutes for each, but when you're, you know, getting signatures and photocopying, uh, these 15 pieces of paper and distributing them again, that's additional payroll, and we've, um, just in managing, uh, measure C and making sure that we are compliant in every detail, we've gone from, uh, a less than 45-minute process of opening housekeeping to a two-hour process for one of our more, uh, more seasoned supervisors, because it's a little more technical than, than we were used to. So, we're already incurring additional expense, and I would ask that, you know, if it's absolutely necessary, um, to provide this information, which is always available to the associates anyway, um, that if it is absolutely necessary, that we're able to at least distribute them maybe the following day, or within the paychecks, or something. Um, I, I, you know, we're, we're the first green business in Emeryville, so I would hope that we wouldn't have to waste, you know, 5,000-plus extra sheets of paper every year for this, but I understand if, if it's absolutely necessary. I'm hoping that there's a, a little more efficient way that we can do it, and that you will consider that. And that's it. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Any other speakers?
Hi, I'm Sarah Nor from E-Base. Um, and I just wanted to first briefly address the issue with the workers who felt that their work hours had been reduced. It's actually an issue with the state court case, not with the city. Um, when the, when 21 workers were suspended, a number of other workers were hired as replacements in December, um, and when an injunction was granted, putting the original workers back to work, um, that injunction specified that the workers be put back on their original schedules. So, then there were still a number of the replacement workers that were still employed at the hotel and have seen their hours, um, be reduced as a result of the original workers being brought back on, on their original schedules, and that's taken a few, uh, weeks to kick into gear. But the injunction, um, does say, does give the, the hotel the option of dividing up the work shifts evenly between both the original workers and the new workers. It just says that they have to make up the difference in pay, um, to the people who are originally employed, so that they don't see their wages, um, get cut as a result of everything that's happened. So, that's on the hotel to decide that. It doesn't have anything to do with what the city's done. Um, and, um, just, I don't want to reiterate everything I said last time. Again, I feel that the workers should have equal appeal rights to the hotels, um, and that the city should consider violations going back to when the, when the law went into effect, um, and especially, I see that Mr. McIntosh has suggested, um, that the violations should only be considered from today's date onward. That obviously skirts the issue of the, of the workers who have submitted complaints, um, so I don't think that's fair. The whole point, in a way, of adopting these regulations was to address those complaints that were on the table. Um, again, it was approved by the voters in December 2005, and the city doesn't really have the authority, I don't think, to, um, to waive that for part of that time. Um, I'm not going to go through, I, I've reviewed Mr. McIntosh's letter. I'm not going to go through it point by point, um, because it's a lot of stuff in here, but I just want to generally, um, point out that the point of these regulations is to clarify measure C, not to actually change what's in measure C. So, for example, measure C explicitly defines an employee as anyone who's regularly working five hours a week or more, um, at the hotel property. Mr. McIntosh has suggested that to applying only to housekeepers, um, so, you know, we can't change what's in an ordinance that was approved by the voters. Um, also, measure C says that, um, the workload should be 5,000 feet. He suggests deleting space that's occupied by beds and appliances. You know, when you give the measurements of a room, it's understood that there will be furniture in there. It's understood that some square feet are going to be more work than others, um, but we, you know, none of us here have the authority to change the limit that was put into the law that was approved by the voters. Um, and finally, as far as the suggestion about workers complaining first to the hotels and then to the city, of course, a worker always has an option to talk first to their manager if they have an issue, um, and in cases where there's a good harmonious work relationship, I imagine that would happen. Um, but I do think in cases where there's an unequal power relationship and where people are worried about losing their jobs, um, I don't think it's fair to require that a worker approach their manager first before coming to the city for help. Um, all right, and, you know, again, I think the most important issue here is that everyone have the same rights to bring their case to the council in the event that they don't feel that their concerns have been dealt with by city staff. Um, thanks very much.
Thank you, Sarah. Anybody, other members of the public wishing to speak? Public comments closed. We'll have council, council liberation now, and you had suggested going through these point by point.
Right, and, and, um, Vice Mayor Atkins, um, some of my comments are going to hit upon the larger issues that, uh, Mr. McIntosh raised and Ms. Nor raised, and obviously, at that point, I, I imagine that the city council will discuss those at length. Other, other comments of mine are simply, um, drafting suggestions, and so my suggestion is that we just go through them, similar to how we did, uh, a number of months ago with the Park Avenue Plan, so, um.
Have at it, John.
Thank you. Um, on page one, and I'm now on the...
Draft resol?
Yes, the draft resol. It says at the top, resolution number 07-dash-blank. Um, and it is paginated at the bottom. It's hard to see, but there's actually a number at the bottom. So, page one, the fourth whereas paragraph. Um, this is the paragraph that talks about, um, the court challenge. It, when, when measure C came into effect, and then, um, the court challenge, and my, um, suggestion or my motion is that this resolution, this, um, whereas paragraph be stricken. And the reason I'm asking for that is because the voters approved this, um, law, and, um, and so I don't think that the city has the authority to, um, delay the point at which the law is the law. So, that's my motion, is to, is to strike this paragraph.
Hey, John, I, I listened to everything you said, but I never got quite centered on the specific paragraph and page.
Oh, okay, so we're on page one.
It's the fourth whereas.
And it's the fourth whereas. It starts with, "Measure C has been in effect since the city council certified the November 8th election." Um, and, and then it says, a little farther down, it says, "However, given the federal measure C challenge," this refers to the lawsuit filed by Woodfin and I think another litigant, um, "the city requested documentation." Okay.
Thank you.
So, my motion is to strike. Is there a second?
How will we come to resolution on what, what the effective date is?
The, it's, the effective date is...
It's January 1st, 2006.
I mean, it's, it's not for, I, I mean, what I'm arguing is it's not for us even to decide. It was passed by the voters. It's the law.
Passed by the voters and becomes effective when you certify the results in December, so...
It's December, that was December, December 5th, or December 6th? Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, in essence, John, removing this, uh, keeps this resolution, resolution silent on that issue.
That's right.
Because, all right. Uh, is there a second to John's motion?
What, what, then, what's the effect of it in terms of what the date becomes?
Well, I think the effect of it is, I, I think relates to the very last page, um, the further resolved is to...
Well, I'll, I'll get to that, and, but we can jump around.
No, but I don't...
No, no, no jumping around.
Wait, wait, but it's not jumping around, because this impacts...
Because we need to know the impact of that.
Right.
The impact. I don't want to have to come back and revisit the same subject.
Yeah, on page 14, the city attorney is referring to page 14, which says, "Further resolved," and that's, that paragraph on 14, um, talks about the, the effective date as well. So, those, so the city attorney is correct. Those two paragraphs are linked, and my, I would gladly change my motion, uh, to state the following. The mo, the paragraph that I identified on page one and the paragraph on page 14 that starts "further resolved," my motion is to strike both of those paragraphs.
Now, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having prob, I've got this thing in front of me, and I'm having trouble finding page 14. Where is the page?
Very last page.
Very last page.
Last page of the resume.
It's, um, hard to find, because...
No, but is it, am I missing, I got it, but is there a numbering here, or sort of, oh, I see.
On the bottom of the page.
There are numbers at the bottom. Okay, thank you. So... All right, and what's your change there, John?
To delete it.
So, my, my proposal, my motion is that this par, the entire par, paragraph that begins "further resolved" in all caps be deleted. And, and by the way, um, what I'm proposing is that, is that at the end of this process, the city council is going to approve these, these regulations with these changes. Uh, I don't want this, I, my, Mayor Davis, my preference would be that this doesn't come back. We, we are going to be... We are going to be very careful in how we keep track of these things, and...
You have a motion to eliminate two resolved. Do you have a second?
Can I make a suggestion?
A whereas and a resolved.
As we go through these, why don't we have a representative of the hotel there and representative of Ebase, so that they can respond to what are, you know, at least we can hear all sides when we make the decision? No? I mean, I don't know how it's going to...
We close public comments.
Okay, all right, all right, you don't want to hear anybody?
If I can, Councilmember Bukowski, certainly Ebase would be in favor of Councilmember Fricki's motion, and I would suggest that Woodfin would be opposed to it, and all the other hotels.
Well, I would, here's what I would say to both sides, you know, feel free to make the arguments about the effective date at the point that the city staff is looking at these complaints, or feel free to make these arguments before a superior court judge. I just don't think that we have that authority. A superior court judge might, but...
I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
I call the question on this.
Thank you.
I just have a question, then. So, is the document going to remain silent, then, as to the effective date?
No, no, this resolution will be effective when you adopt it.
Right. But in terms of how far one can go back with the complaints with these two changes...
Well, I, well, yes, it would be. As it relates to, as it relates to any complaints that we've received, we're going to be in a situation essentially of going back to the adoption of Measure C, and to the extent that there is documents to support whether they, you know, have or haven't violated it, then that'll be instructive, and to the extent there are no documents...
I have a question for the city attorney. We're going back to certification of the election.
Okay, so I want to know, where does this document say that, then? If we get rid of the two things that John is suggesting we get rid of, where does, where do we flop back to the January first date?
Just because that's the effective date, well, it's not January first, it would be December six, two thousand and five. Because that's the date that Measure C, election results were certified.
Okay, so, so do we, do we need some specific language that says that in here?
No, that is, that is, that is fact.
That's the law.
Okay.
Right. Okay, there's a motion and a second on deleting these two paragraphs. Let us...
I have a question.
Ruth?
Yeah. I want to understand the significance of August eleventh, two thousand and six. What happened on that day?
That was, that was the date that the city, under my signature, sent a letter to the hotels requesting that they provide documentation...
Of compliance.
Of compliance with Measure C.
Okay, thank you.
All right, could we have a reading of the council's wishes? Somebody call the roll?
Councilmember Bukowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fricki.
Aye.
Councilmember Cassis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkin.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. Carry on, Mr. Fricki.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. The next is on page two, and it's at the bottom, it's the paragraph subsection E, and this is the issue about floor space, and Mr. McIntosh brought up this issue, he brought up this issue when he spoke during the public comment. I also read Mr. McIntosh's letter, and I was persuaded that with regard to the, for example, the HVAC equipment, Mr. McIntosh's letter stated that that equip, that that equipment is in a closet, and is not accessible by the hotel guests, neither is it accessible by the hotel housekeeper, and that, it doesn't make sense that that would be included. So, I would like to propose the following. Subsection E, the second to last line, at the end of that line, it says, "or HVAC equipment." Okay, so, that, those three words, "or HVAC equipment," I propose that we delete. I propose that we move the "or" word before the word "cabinetry," so that it would read to the existence or placement of furniture fixtures, comma, "or cabinetry," within the guest room, okay? Now, there's also a sentence that I propose adding, because I think that the basic idea is that if there's, if there's places in a hotel room that are not accessible, like this HVAC equipment, that that should not be counted. So, here's the, here's the following sentence, and I don't feel strongly about the sentence if the city council doesn't want it, but here's a sentence that would be added, and I'll read it slowly for those writing it down. Floor space in a guest room that is not regularly accessed by guests or by hotel employees is not included, period. So, those, that's my suggestion for the change on number one, subsection E.
I'd like to make a substitute motion and eliminate the floor space sentence, and just go along with your deletion of the HVACs and the change on the "or."
That's fine.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, could we call the roll here?
Councilmember Bukowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fricki.
Aye.
Councilmember Cassis.
Aye.
Councilmember Atkin.
Aye.
Sorry, Vice Mayor Atkin, and Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The next is on page number six. Okay, page number six, under subsection D as in dog, and this is a, the larger section deals with, it's number seven, it's called Annual Measure C Hotel Permit Application. It lays out a procedure by which the hotel's permit is granted or renewed. And so, the first thing is under D, and this is page six again, under D, number D one, the sentence reads, "All employees who are presently required and will be required to clean," and then it says more than, more than, so I'm suggesting the first more than be deleted. I'm not, I'm assuming I don't need a motion on that.
No.
Okay, the next, as you continue that sentence, "more than the applicable square-footage threshold of floor space in their workday are and will be paid at least time and a half the minimum average compensation per hour for that work." And my concern here is that the term "for that work" is a bit ambiguous. My understanding of Measure C is that if you cross that threshold in hour seven, hour one, you receive time and a half, and I don't think that that's precise enough here, and so I'm proposing the following change at the very end. Instead of saying "for that work," I would say "for all of the hours worked that day."
What's the difference between what you're proposing and what's there?
Okay, here's the difference. What it says currently is "for that work," okay, and what I'm concerned about is that it read, read in a vacuum, it suggests that you're going to get paid time and a half for hours, for the hour that you cross that threshold and subsequent hours. So, if in hour seven, you cross that threshold, you'll be paid time and a half for hours seven and eight, assuming you're going to work eight-hour day, but you wouldn't think, having read this, that you're going to get paid time and a half for hours one through six. And so, my change is "for that work," instead of "for that work," I say "for all of the hours worked that day."
Doesn't Measure C specify that you'll get additional pay for additional duties?
I think you're changing Measure C.
And that if you, if you go...
No, I think this is really, you know, more of an instruction to the hotels when they're applying, and this does not, this, his changes, or Councilmember Fricki's suggested changes are in fact consistent with Measure C. I would support that change.
All right.
I think it just gives clarification to the, to the point that if you do work more than the ascribed amount of square footage, you get time and a half for all, all hours working that day, just not for, you know, subsequent hours.
So, if they, if they clean, if they clean several rooms, and then one room has additional work, that means they automatically get additional compensation for the previous rooms that they clean?
Well, it's not additional work. It's based on square footage in part, but yes, the ultimate is they get time and a half for all hours worked that day.
Like, what it's saying, if my regular workday is an eight-hour day, but I work nine hours that day, I would get time and a half for all nine hours instead of for that one extra hour. That's what this is saying.
If you cross, if you cross the threshold.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not quite clear where in this, and a gentleman from the Woodfin brought this up, you know, for people who stay more than one day, there is this environmental issue where they don't change the sheets if the, if the people don't want them changed, and they reuse the towels. Now, certainly, this council wants to encourage those kinds of environmental measures. Where does that fit in here?
Okay, well, the way, my answer, Mayor Davis, is the following.
We want to encourage that.
Right. I think that the argument that Mr. McIntosh made was essentially that the five, the square-footage threshold test is not the best test, because there's a difference between a room...
One night stay and a stayover.
Exactly. And, and, and if I was...
And it could be substantial.
Right, and if I was sitting here proposing an ordinance along these lines, I would, may very well agree with you, but that's not, that's not what I'm doing. I'm trying to, you know, trap, draft, craft these regulations, so it's consistent with the law that we have. So, what we have is what we have, and what you're suggesting is maybe a more precise thing, but we don't have the power to change that.
I would agree with Councilmember Fricki.
What it really says is that the five thousand square feet is really not an accurate measure, because the volume of work changes whether it's a one-night stand or a person who lives there for three weeks.
That's correct, but all we have in the Measure C, the only threshold we have is square footage, and we're...
All right, so I see your point, John. You're, we're sticking right to Measure C, and we're not allowed to really consider the environmental aspects here.
Yeah, I think Mr. McIntosh is, I mean, some of the points that he raises are within our purview, like the HVAC, that's within our purview. I found that argument persuasive, and that's why I advocated for the change. But something that you're saying is, it could be, the argument could very well be very sound, but it's outside of our purview.
Well, it did seem to me though...
Because of the way Measure C is written.
Exactly.
All right.
Exactly. So...
All right, focus back on what you wanted to change.
Okay, on page six.
No, no, don't, let's stay where we are.
Yeah, I know. I'm now, I'm now focusing back on this one change, and that was to change the three words "for that work" to "for all of the hours worked that day," and I just add that that occurs three times on that page. The second time is under D, D two B, as in boy, and D, and there, it's at the, at the very end, "for that work," and under D two C, at the end, very end as well. So, those three, for the...
Yeah, second that.
I just want to say, maybe I'm misinterpreting it, but it seemed to me that the measure required additional pay for the additional work, in that if you do it this way, then they're going to be paid additional pay without doing additional work for the whole day. But I don't know.
Well, that's what, I'd like to, just to clarify that for sure, Mike, is what John is saying correct, is, so if you work that extra hour, and what Ruth said, you go to, your normal shift's eight, you go to nine, the whole day gets paid at time and a half. That's what Measure C says?
That's what Measure C says.
No, if you cross the threshold.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. It's a threshold of square footage.
Square footage.
You're just cleaning up the language. You have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bukowski. Councilmember Fricki.
Aye.
Councilmember Cassis.
Reluctantly, aye.
Vice Mayor Atkin.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. All right.
Okay, at the bottom of page six, three lines up from the bottom, the sentence starts "further," it says "further," "The hotel may rely upon such documentation or other reasonable documentation estimating room size," and then it says "to," in order to specify, so I take out the first two, that's a typo. So, I assume I don't need a motion on that.
No.
Okay.
It's typo, move along.
Page, page eight. Okay, now, page eight, under D, page eight, by the way, is, is under Annual Measure C Hotel Permit Issuance and Appeals. This change is a, what's the term? It's a, it's not a substantive change, it's just a cleaning up change. Here's the sentence. "A hotel may appeal to the city council, the city manager's denial of an annual Measure C hotel permit application, or any conditions attached to an annual Measure C hotel permit." And then it says, "within fifteen calendar days of the city manager's denial of the application or the issuance of an annual Measure C hotel permit with one or more conditions." Okay, here's my, my observation. That sentence is ambiguous because of the time periods and where they're put in the sentence, and so, if you look, the three lines down, the language where it starts, "within fifteen calendar days," okay, from within fifteen calendar days all the way to the period, I would move that entire clause to the beginning of the sentence, and then I would say, comma, and then continue with the sentence, "A hotel may appeal to the city council," and then I would put in, one in parentheses, "one, the city manager's denial of an annual, annual Measure C hotel permit application," or, two, "any conditions attached to annual Measure C hotel permit," period.
That's fine, I second that.
Is there any objection to that change? Move along.
Okay, now, the next thing is a substantive thing, and it is, it was brought up in the public comment period, and it's under E, and this is regarding the appeal, and the sentence reads, "No person, individual, or organization other than the interested hotel may appeal the city manager's decision to grant, deny, or conditionally issue an annual Measure C hotel permit to any particular hotel." So, my suggestion here is to delete that sentence.
I'll second that.
Can we talk about that?
Yeah.
And so, what is the effect of doing that, is... What's the intended effect of that? Anybody can appeal it?
Well, here's the thing.
Anybody can appeal it.
Yeah, and we, and this is important to, now, it's important to realize where we are in the entire document. This is under eight, Annual Measure C Hotel Permit Issuance and Appeals, and there are, the thing to understand is that there are three, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Biddle, but there are three ways that this comes, this, these issues may come before the city town, the city, city council under eight, which I just read, which is the Annual Measure C Hotel Permit Issuance and Appeals, or number nine, which is revocation or modification of an annual Measure C hotel permit, and number ten, administrative complaints. And my goal here is to essentially provide a fairly broad appeal right, and this, this E that I'm focused in on now, subsection E on page eight, is the process by which the hotel gets its annual permit, and it empowers the city manager to either issue the permit, or issue it with conditions, or refer it to the city council, and the sentence that I'm seeking to delete limits the, limits who can appeal, and, and so by deleting, I think what that does, at least my intention, is to broaden the scope of people that can appeal.
How does it do that? I don't get how... How it does that, by taking out that first sentence? I mean, it still leaves a requirement, if you, it makes it sound like if you want to, you've got to get a majority of the city council to vote to do something.
Okay, that's a good question. I thought that-
If, John, if what you're trying to do is make the appeal reciprocal, I support that. I'm just not sure where you, whether this is-
But I mean, the issue of reciprocity-
Right.
Is, isn't necessarily here. I mean, I guess my concern is, is that there's a permitting process that the hotels are going to go through, that, you know, they have to provide documentation and work. Your staff are going to be charged with looking with that, and, and, you know, making a determination whether that permit should be issued or not. And if the, and then the council will get, you know, word of that, issuance of that permit. And if you wanted to bring it up, then obviously the council could. And obviously, if there were conditions attached that the hotel wasn't happy about, they could also appeal it. My concern is that by broadening it, you're now opening up the hotel permitting process as a means to, for somebody who is, has the avenue of filing an administrative complaint as to their particular issue with the hotel, of using, sort of, using that process as well as, as well as the hotel permitting process to get their issue resolved when they already have a separate administrative complaint process for the, you know, to have their issues resolved. And why mucky up, as it were, the hotel permitting process? So that's, that's the why.
So your advice, then, is that we don't, we don't change this particular aspect to it if we're trying to get to reciprocal right to appeal?
I think the reciprocity is really in item 10, and that's where the administrative complaints come in, and in particular, it would be on page 10, excuse me, page 11, actually. It would be item 10, subsection I. And that's where we provided, that to the extent an administrative complaint is filed, we go to the item, yeah.
I have a proposed change there.
I'm sure you do.
Yeah.
And I think that's where the reciprocity, where they, then, the employee, if the city manager makes a determination, that they would, the way I wrote it, they don't have any appeal right, but if you want to change it so that they can appeal it to the city council-
Right.
-that would be fine.
Okay, so-
But I think, I was trying to, my recommendation would be keep these, the permitting and the complaint process separate, and not have one get sort of the hotel permitting process-
Okay, yeah, I see, I see now what you're saying, and I appreciate that. And so I am going to withdraw that suggestion.
Great.
And, and so I'm, that makes sense to me.
The E on page eight, right.
And the reason I'm withdrawing it is because of what Mr. Biddle said, is that other persons other than the hotel have recourse under number 10.
Right.
Okay. But there's another change I would like to make in that paragraph, a very minor change, and that is where it's, where you see the number 15.
Right.
Notwithstanding, this is the sentence, the second sentence of that section, it says, "Notwithstanding the foregoing, the city council made by majority vote of the entire body, within fifteen calendar days of the city manager's decision, order that a decision of the city manager to grant, deny, or conditionally issue an annual Measure C hotel permit to any particular hotel stand appealed," which means that it would come to us. And my concern is, right there, is that, is that there are periods of time during the calendar year when we might not have a meeting in 15 days.
That's right, 30 days.
I was suggesting 45.
Good enough. Any objection to changing that to 45?
Okay, thank you. Okay. Under-
Page 10.
I have, okay, under page nine, under B, the first full paragraph, it's the same issue there, the 15 calendar days. I would like that changed to 45.
Any objection to that by the part, okay?
Okay, the next is, did you get that?
You're on 9B, I'm sorry, John.
It's on page nine, and it's paragraph B, and it's, "15 calendar days be changed to 45." Okay, on the same page, under section 10, Administrative Complaints, A, the first thing is, it says, "An employee who alleges a violation of Measure C," I would add the language, so it reads, "an employee," and then here's where I add the language, "or former employee." And the reason I add that is because if an employee is alleging that he or she was improperly terminated, he's, that would be a former employee. So I would say, "an employee or former employee who alleges a violation of Measure C."
Any objection to that change?
I support that.
Okay.
And, John, I just want to point out, it looks like we need to go back to sub-paragraph C, there's also a 15-day time period there.
Actually, if we can, so if we're going back to 9B, and the change was for 45 days, I think it actually should have been 45 days. The change should have been in 9C.
Oh, that's right, yes, because that one is the-
That's where the council is approving.
Right, okay, hotel may appeal.
Or they're standing, having the matter appealed.
Oh, that's right, yes, okay, good catch. So it's not B, so 15, so B, the 15 days in B stays the same, but it's the, it's 15, it's the 15 in C.
Right.
Yes, good catch.
That was Carol Victor, thank you.
So, stat on that, and 45 on this one. Okay, thanks. Okay, so 10A, "an employee or-"
So, nor is everybody comfortable with that?
There is no objection to that.
And then if you finish, if you finish that sen, continue that sentence, it says, "an employee or former employee who alleges a violation of Measure C," and then there's a clause that says, "with respect to his or her working conditions." And my question to the city attorney is, it seems to me that that clause is qualifying the person's, the range of things that the employee can file an administrative complaint about. Was that intended, or, because it seems like there might be other things besides his or her working conditions, so?
Well, all I was, I mean, I think the, what Measure C really addresses is really wages, and, you know, I can't be retaliated against.
Can we delete that phrase?
Yeah, what I'm seeking-
I don't have a, I don't think it, I don't necess, I didn't mean or intend to constrain it, and I don't think by deleting it, we're expanding it, so.
How about just deleting that clause?
That's what I'm suggesting.
All right. Any objection to deleting that clause?
So we're deleting "with respect to his or her working conditions."
Yeah.
Exactly.
While we're here, are you going to address Woodfin's suggested, I would like to talk about their notion that it was in their, their letter about perhaps requiring, before they, an employee presents a claim, and we can talk about applying this prospectively and not to what we have right now. But to a certain extent, it seems to make perhaps some sense to require them first to try to resolve it with their employer, and show some, some proof of having at least attempted that.
I think that's prudent.
Makes sense.
They should work within the organization first.
But Measure C does not speak to that.
Here's the problem I see with that, is that what's going to, in the law, there's this idea of exhausting administrative remedies. And what that means is that you have to demonstrate that you've exhausted administrative remedies. So if you put the language in that Mr. McIntosh is suggesting, then the burden is upon the complainant, I think, to demonstrate that they have exhausted that avenue, okay? And so the hotel could say, "Well, they didn't come to the hotel first, and therefore their complaint is invalid." Now, this is a less formal process than this, than the court thing that I described of exhausting administrative remedies, but I would hate to reject, I would hate for the city staff to reject-
Yeah.
-a complaint because they, they didn't, you know, what, we'll get into the business of saying, "Well, you told your boss that you were not happy, and you thought that was enough to now go to the city, but this hotel says, 'Well, no, but you didn't go to the right boss.'" And so it gets, it makes it, it makes the regulations more complicated, I think.
Well, can't you say that if someone comes to the city, then we will automatically notify the hotel, and then, and so they would at least be aware that someone's come to the city at the same time that it was filed?
We do that.
I, I mean, I think, I think we want to encourage people to try to resolve their differences, so, you know, themselves. So I think they should be required to go-
Well, I mean, I, I would tend to agree that we want to encourage it, but I share some of the same concerns that Councilmember Fricki does, that to the extent we start, so I don't think it's a bad idea, but I'm not, I don't have any suggestions at this point of how we-
Well, it's probably something that should be handled internally by the hotel.
Well, I mean, I would think we, you know, I would hope that the employees would, would in fact do that.
But if we require them to, that we're going to notify the hotel right away, then at least they're aware of it at the same time.
I mean, there's a suggestion that we could put language that employees are encouraged to, you know, to-
That's fine.
-try to address, but, but it's not a requirement.
Right. I think that's good.
Say that again, Michael.
Well, it's just generally, employees are encouraged to first address their complaints with their employer. It would be somewhere within 10A.
Well, no, I'm still not sure why, why we're not making that a requirement. I mean, why, why wouldn't we want to make that a requirement? I mean, you can't just come here willy-nilly. You've got to try to resolve things among yourselves, and if you can't, then, then come ahead.
I guess my concern is that-
Measure C says you can come here.
Well, I mean, I guess the concern is, is that parties start trying to, to play that, you know, that requirement somehow, I can't really articulate it, but, but it's then used as a shield to pursue the complaint process with the city. "Oh, well, you know, you haven't complied with this regulation that is, you know, that's not set within the language of Measure C itself, but we've now sort of erected this extra hurdle that perhaps the hotels are going to try and hide behind."
Well, so how do, so how do we draft it to get to what we're trying to do? I mean, just saying encouraged doesn't say they have to do it. I mean, I, I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, we've got to stay within the guidelines of Measure C, no question about it. We're all trying to do that. But in any labor setting, you know, and it's different, John, I think, from exhausting your administrative remedies. You're supposed to file a grievance and, and go through the process, and, you know, so is there a way for us to set that requirement? I, I mean, maybe I'm the only one that wants to do that, to set that requirement forth without violating Measure C.
Well, I don't think Measure C was meant to be fair. That's probably what it comes right down to, and so, you know.
Well, so what I'm asking the city attorney is, is if we, if we put that requirement in, are you saying that's a violation of Measure C, in your opinion?
I don't, I, I mean, that's a tough one to answer, sitting right here. I'd have to think about that. I mean, the other, I guess perhaps what I would suggest, if it's something that the council wants, the idea is something that the council wants to entertain, again, I don't think it would be something that we would want to apply retroactively because obviously that hasn't occurred, or to the extent that it has, I don't know. But I would suggest that maybe we can continue on, and then, again, these are adopted by resolution, you can amend them next meeting, and so we can come back and we can look at the issue.
Let us continue on. How many more of these do you have, John?
But is that, is it something that the council, as a body, wants us to pursue?
Let us proceed ahead, and if-
But let's find out if a majority of us want to do what I'm trying to do. Maybe a majority of us want to do what John wants to do, and just say, you know, encourage is good enough.
Well, I support John in this. I think that it is, we can wrestle with these rules and regulations, work with them for three, six months, nine months, pick out some of the things that are wrong, and then come back and take a look at that, and see if it is realistic, and it is something that we really want to encourage.
Well, let me just, let me just say, if there's a way to legally do it within Measure C, what I'm saying is, is that why should we have our staff have to take on every single thing that any employee's concerned about? I mean, if they can go to their employer and get it resolved, it's much better that it happened at that level than us having to investigate every single complaint that somebody has.
There is no doubt about that.
See, that's why I like the word "encourage," because encourage suggests that that's the way you should do it, and if somebody just comes to the city, then when we investigate the complaint, that's taking into consideration the fact that they didn't, didn't go to the hotel first.
Okay, and John said he liked that language, so it sounds like a majority of you don't want to make a requirement.
At this time.
Okay.
At this time.
Okay.
Although I think you're right, that's the way it should be, I don't, I don't think we can do that.
Okay, thank, thank you. The next point is, at the same page at the bottom, subsections B and C, the, these sections set a one-year look back, okay? Considering that we have, we, at the very beginning of this process, we deleted the August 11th paragraph, there has to be a tolling. Now, the one year, I don't, I think the one-year look back is fine, but here's the problem, there's, it, if, if an employee is alleging on this date that they were not paid for the period from December 05, December 6, 05, to February 6, 06, February 6 is one year ago, that period, that window is not covered. So I don't have precise language, but-
Would you recommend something about, any, about the act of discrimination or the complaint that happens has to be for an occurrence on or after January 1, 2006?
Well, here's the thing, I, as the person who wrote this, I agree with the drafter that you want to limit how far back you can go. So I do agree with the one-year look back. But see, now we're passing these regulations, so I would basically say that-
Yeah, but the year's already run, essentially.
Right, the years run, so for like, here's, I mean, for example, for 90 days, for the next 90 days, if you get a complaint, then you can go back all the way to December 6. But after the 90 days, then it's the one year.
And where are you going to put that?
I don't know. See, here, it would have to be here, because this is where, so I know it'll have to be here, I just don't know exactly how to structure it.
Mike, do you have a suggestion, or Carol? Or Michael?
Why don't we adopt a resolution that says that? Because this is an ordinance, and you don't want to put that in an ordinance.
No, no, this is a resolution.
No, 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 this is a resolution.
Sorry.
Well, maybe, maybe-
I mean, I think I've got, essentially, you don't-
You have the intent.
I'm sorry?
You have the intent of what we're trying to-
I, I do, and-
So is that, is that okay with everyone?
Give us some time to put something together.
So we're going to keep the one year as a limitation, but with the exception of items that occurred between January 1 of '06 and now. Right?
No, it's December 6, 05 to, it's December 6, 05 to February 6, 2006. You know, that's the period that's-
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, okay, so that-
I think you have support there, John.
Great, thank you.
Move along.
Page 10. Page 10, the last paragraph, H as in hairy, one, two, three, four, five lines down, I'm focused in on the, the words "in the instant case," which is at the end of that line, five. "In the instant case," I'm not going to read the whole sentence, let me just read under I, "The city manager shall in writing notify the subject large hotel of his or her findings and demand that the large hotel comply with Measure C, including ordering the payment of back pages if appropriate." I'm not sure what the words "in the instant case" add to that sentence, so I would seek to delete them.
Everyone agreed with that? No objection?
Well, wait, let's hear the city attorney.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, and then the words "in the instant case" occur once more in that paragraph, and that is-
Item two.
Under, at the end of little, of two.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Okay, now, page 11, under I, this is what Mr. Biddle brought out earlier. This is the issue of, of the appeal, and I'll read the whole thing because it's, it's a big substantive issue. "If the city manager, in consultation with the city attorney, determines that there are facts or information that the-" facts or information that the allegations are unsubstantiated," or, these are allegations, by the way, that are done by the worker, the employee, "if the allegations are unsubstantiated or there is insufficient information or facts to make a determination that Measure C has been or is being violated, the city manager shall in writing notify the complainant and the large hotel of his or her findings, period. No person, individual, or organization may appeal the city manager's decision." My proposed change is to add the clause at the beginning of the last sentence to say, "Other than the complainant, comma, no person, individual, or organization may appeal the city manager's decision."
I'd like to add where it says, "The city manager shall in writing notify the complainant shall in writing with copy to the city council."
Oh, I don't need that.
Well, let's take what John has to say. I would support that, John. Other than the complainant, any objection to that wording?
No.
All right. Ken, what is it that you want to do here?
I just wanted to get the council to have a copy of the finding.
I believe...
I think that's an invasion of privacy.
Yeah, I wouldn't support that.
The whole thing's an invasion of privacy.
Does anybody support this?
I don't need that, because basically I believe in a adversarial legal system, and it's up to the complainant to bring that to the city council's attention.
All right.
Okay, the next item is K as in special K. "The duties ascribed herein to the city manager, city attorney, and city staff are directory not mandatory," and I'm assuming that that language is in there so that a writ is not...
To protect the city.
Right. So the writ is not taken from the city staff?
Yeah.
Okay. So no change there. I just asked for clarification. Under section 11, City Council Hearing Procedure, under subsection A, the last sentence reads, "Timely filing of the notice of appeal shall be a jurisdictional requirement." I'm not sure why that's in there, so perhaps you can clarify that.
Well, just so, you know, I mean, there are timeframes, and so we don't want to encourage decisions being made, and then, you know, the appeal is not filed in a timely fashion, they come later, and so we're just...we're trying to put some rules in to make sure that people comply with these timeframes, so everybody knows what the...
Got it, okay.
Well, maybe that's a place to give them a little more time. Maybe it's a 30-day would make a little more sense there.
Yeah, I would suppose that.
Well, I took that sort of utilizing language that we have in our municipal code. Trying to be somewhat consistent with that. We do have a 15-day period for appeals to the council.
Okay, no change. Under the...on the same page, under C, I'm going to read the sentence here, and I'm looking for focus on the word applicant. "The city clerk shall forthwith deliver copies of the notice of appeal to the city manager and city attorney and to the applicant or real parties in interest at their last known address." Now, applicant...
How about complainant?
That's the...I did a search on MS Word, and that's the first time applicant appears, and I think it's referring to...I actually think that it's not what you were thinking, but what...I think it's the hotel. Is that right? Is that word referred to the hotel?
It's probably meant to, yeah.
Okay, so I'm suggesting instead of applicant, which creates ambiguity, we would change that word to hotel, or a large hotel, whatever the city council wants.
Large hotel.
Okay.
To comply with Measure C.
Okay, and now we're going to go to page 12.
Wait a minute, wait, 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 wait. I think it's meant to be the appellant, and it was a spell check problem.
The appellant?
Oh.
Because these are appeals.
Okay, okay. So let me just read it again. Okay. The appellant.
So somebody's appealing...
Okay, got it. Okay, so let's change that to appellant.
Can we make some provision in here, not that it's a requirement, but that it can be transmitted through electronic means, because as we go forward in time, it's going to become more and more of a way of communicating. I'm not suggesting we change the idea of mailing it, but, you know, if we can...any mail communication does go faster, and where there are time limits here, it couldn't hurt to add that as an additional means of communication that...
I don't need it. I mean, that's kind of left...I leave that to the staff. That's a detail that's for the staff.
Tell me exactly what...who are the real parties in interest?
Yeah, well, that's...
Why is that in there?
That's a good question, actually.
Why is that in there, Michael? I don't think you really need it. You're addressing the...who are the players?
Actually, no. You know what? I think that...I think what this is, is...actually, no, no. I think what's going on here is that one is the goal of this subsection is to provide notice to all parties, to all sides, and so if...
Why don't we just say all parties?
See, because it could be...
Because real party in interest would be referring to, you know, I'm a work...I'm a hotel worker, and I appeal, and you, of course, want to let the hotel know that I've appealed, so you...
Well, we've eliminated the notion of the hotel worker appealing the issuance of a hotel permit, so that's where I was hesitating. But what could occur is you could have a complaint, an administrative complaint, and the way that the city manager addresses that is to then amend the hotel's annual permit. And so you could then have the hotel appealing the amendment of that permit, and so they would be the appellant, and then the...because it was meant to address a complaint of a hotel worker, it would view them as sort of the real party in interest. So I think that's sort of why we were using that language.
Yeah, it's a notice thing, so I don't...maybe, Nora, we could just leave that in there, whoever the real party...
I think it should...it's fine to just change it to appellant instead of applicant.
Okay. I'm okay with that. The next is on page 12, and the same thing comes up under subsection E, the second to the last line. It says, "The applicant or real parties in interest," so that needs to be changed to the appellant.
It says the appellant and the...
It says the appellant. Is it appellant and the applicant?
Oh, the appellant. Oh, I see, there, the appellant and the applicant. Oh, okay, so what's...
It should just say, "Provided to the appellant or real parties in interest."
Okay, so let's strike applicant, and then on that same paragraph, two lines above, it says, "City council shall set a time for the hearing no sooner than 15 calendar days thereafter." So I'd like to change that to 45.
So that's no sooner, so...
Is there any objection to that?
Oh, wait, wait, no.
Oh, no sooner than...oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. That's...that is no sooner than, so that does not need to change.
All right.
Sorry. Okay. Same page 12 at the bottom, it says, under L as in Larry, it says, "The permit holder." That term, permit holder, that's the first time that term is used in the regulations, and so for the sake of not introducing...
Large hotel?
Yeah, for the sake of not introducing a new term, I would say, "The large hotel, comma, appellant and staff members."
Or should we just say, "The appellant, real parties in interest, and staff members?"
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, that would follow the same...
Say that again, Michael.
The appellant.
Appellant, comma, real parties in interest, and staff members.
Take out the words permit holder.
So strike permit holder.
Basically, what this does under L is it sets forth who gets to ask questions, and, you know, who gets to ask questions, produce evidence, and obviously, the goal is you hear from both sides. That's...
Who are staff members? Which staff? City staff?
City staff.
Hotel staff?
City staff.
All right.
If you want to say city staff.
Let's do that, city staff.
Put city in there.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Okay, it'll read as the following. "The large hotel, comma..."
No, appellant.
I'm sorry. The appellant, the appellant, the appellant, real parties in interest, and city staff members.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any objection to that on the part of the council? All right, John.
Okay, page 13, under number 12, it says, "Appeals of City Council Decisions," and it's just a short sentence. It reads, "Any appeal of a decision of the City Council shall be governed by California Code of Civil Procedure Section 1094.5." That's, by the way, that's the section that deals with writs, and this is kind of a hyper lawyerly comment, but I don't think we really...do we have the authority to...we do?
To establish, yeah.
Oh, we do have that authority?
Yes, you do.
Okay, so forget about it. I have no changes for that, and I am done.
All right.
Do I hear a motion on your part?
Hold on. We have some suggested language to deal with the tolling issue.
All right. Say the page number.
Page 9.
Page 9, and so we could...I guess we could add it as a new subsection 10D, maybe?
Well, there is a 10D.
Yeah, and then just renumber or reletter everything.
Oh, okay, right.
But here, let me read it first, and we can figure out where we want to put it. "For complaints filed up to and including February 6, 2007, the allegations in said complaints may relate back to the effective date of Measure C, comma, December 6, 2005."
Well, I think that's fine, except that since these regulations are taking effects, I assume they'll take effect today.
Right.
I would give it a little bit like...I would go out a little bit, like 30 days or something, out from today, and then relate back, right? That's good language, except that what it's doing is it's saying that we're only going to go back for the ones that are currently filed. So in the interest of fairness, I think you should provide a little bit of a time after this is...
How about to the end of the month, February 28, 2007?
Yeah, that sounds good.
So we agreed, "For complaints filed up to and including February 28, 2007, the allegations in said complaints may relate back to the effective date of Measure C, comma, December 6, comma, 2005, period."
And by the way, I should note that this is the one place where the regulations are now explicitly stating the effective date of Measure C, which I have no problem with.
Would you consider a motion, John?
Yes.
On this resolution?
Yes, I move the resolution with the changes.
Second.
Okay, I just have one question before we leave this whole discussion. I mean, this is the overall, with all the changes we made. You're moving it now, right?
Right.
Okay. So, Mike, I just want to ask, in terms of the concern raised by Hugh as to, you know, this...he refers to it as a discriminatory effect on their hotel because of the suites. There is no way to deal with that issue in view of the language of Measure C?
I don't think it distinguishes...I mean, they're...you know, Measure C deals in square footage, and they're trying to make an argument that, well, they've got, you know, kitchens, which I guess they're claiming don't get regularly cleaned, and therefore, you know, their suites are larger, and since they're larger and it doesn't take as much work to clean the kitchens, therefore, they're going to run up against that 5,000-square-foot threshold with their workers much quicker. And so therefore, they're going to be essentially, you know, either having to instruct their workers to, you know, to not...or to essentially, you know, they're going to limit the amount of work that they're going to do in a day, so therefore, their hours are going to be cut back, I think, so that they don't run over that 5,000-square-foot threshold and thus have to pay them time and a half.
All right.
And, you know, I certainly understand that position, but I don't know that Measure C necessarily gives us any, you know, wiggle room on that to say that kitchens aren't part... I mean, I think there's some justification to say that HVAC, you know, closets aren't, you know, part of the square foot calculation, but a kitchen?
Yeah, it just, you know, I mean, as Ken said...
But I, you know, I appreciate the...I mean, if...I think the end effect is, is that if Woodfin wants to sort of maintain the situation where they're not paying their employees at a time and a half rate for, you know, once they hit that 5,000-square-foot threshold, the end effect is that I think it's within their right to say, okay, you know, you're going to have less rooms to clean in a day, and therefore, you're going to get less hours. And, you know, it has the resulting effect is that the workers get less hour and less pay.
Yeah, but I guess what just seems inherently unfair here is that compared to the other large hotels, this is unique. I mean, just because the rooms are larger, so they're, you know, they're going to hit that threshold sooner, and their only choice is to put on more workers, you know, to avoid paying time and a half.
More workers who work less hours.
Yeah.
I think that's the effect of it. And, I mean, but I have a real hard...
I'm not so sure that that's what the employees were really shooting for here.
I don't think they were.
Sarah, do you have a thought on this? Come up to the microphone. Come on.
Are you going to call them out of order?
Is it okay if I ask?
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
In a second, but I have a question about, before we approve this, about, you know, one of the issues that's in this whole thing has been raised by the Woodfin. I mean, before I vote on this, I'd like to hear...I'd like to hear...I mean, I'm not ready to vote on it, so if you, you know, I support all the changes we've made, but if you make me vote on it before I get this done, I'm going to vote no.
There's a simple answer to this.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so the square footage limit is prorated by the hours in the shift work. So if they were going to reduce the work hours, they'd also have to reduce the square footage correspondingly, so I don't think that this would have the unintended effect of reducing workers' work hours. As far as the size of the rooms, I mean, it is sort of a blunt instrument for approximating how much work a person's doing, the square footage. In this case, I would say that the extra work involved in cleaning dishes and microwaves that the kitchen adds probably does counterbalance the fact that people are going to be cleaning fewer rooms. So, you know, in other hotels, in an average hotel room, it would come out, 5,000 feet, would come out to about 14 rooms, in the Woodfin, it comes out to about 10. But I think the extra work involved in cleaning the kitchen probably does make that balance out about equally, but as far as is there something that can be done to make it exactly scientifically equal, I don't have a suggestion for how to do that.
Can I speak to that, please?
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I've been...
You have to allow it now.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm for sure.
Let's hear from the city attorney first, if we could.
Mayor, are we opening this up back here?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, Councilmember Cassis was out of order, but he allowed Ebay to speak. I think it's only fair to allow a representative from the hotel to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been with the hotel since it opened, and there is really a very distinct difference. During the week, Sunday night through Thursday night, we are a corporate hotel, and yes, we have suites, but when a corporate traveler comes in, he does not come in and cook. The kitchen doesn't get touched. The FedEx pilot comes in, goes straight to his room, takes a shower, and goes to bed and sleep. The living room and the kitchen, nine out of 10 suites, are never touched during the week. On the weekend, that's different. You have leisure people that come in, you know, you have three or four people in a room, a family comes in, and then they use the kitchens. But it's not a fair analogy to say that they're doing... But it's not a fair analogy to say that they're doing dishes, because during the week, that just doesn't happen unless it's a stayover guest, and guests that are there all the time and that are staying over, 90% of the time clean their own kitchen. So I just want you to see that it really isn't like there's dirty kitchens to clean every day, because as a corporate hotel, that's just not how it works.
Okay, so I'm back to the city attorney. Mike, are you saying that with, what, because of the language of Measure C, there's no way for us to deal with that?
I don't think you can, and I just wanted to correct myself and thank Margaret O'Brien that, uh, that is consistent with what Ms. Nord said, that you do, um, Measure C does provide that if a, a room work, cleaner works less than an eight, you know, full eight-hour day, then the threshold gets reduced proportionately, so, um, uh, so it's, it's based, the, the 5,000 square feet is based on an, uh, eight-hour day, and so if you are, your hours are reduced to, say, to four hours, then the threshold by which you would then get time and a half is 2,500 square feet. So if you clean more than 2,500 square feet in a four-hour day, you get time and a half for those four hours. So, um, I stand corrected.
Well, it, it, it's, you know, it's part of the problem with having a labor contract done by initiative, but, you know, if there's no way we can address that, because I think legitimate concern's been raised to balance out among the hotels, then, then I'll, I'll move forward with it then. Thank you.
Okay. Call the roll, please. Councilmember Bukowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fricki.
Aye.
Councilmember Cassis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. I will now return to the redevelopment, uh...